Fantastic. Oh, welcome everyone. We're up and live. And we've got a number of viewers as well, which is really cool. So, welcome to the first of a series of sessions, information sessions, a little bit about the new ward system, just what that will look like, and also single transferable vote, voting, which of course Nelson is going to be using this time round. My name is Davora Nikwadis-Smith, terrible mouthful. I'm the manager of governance and support services here at council and the deputy electoral officer. So a great opportunity to chat things through. I've got a bit of presentation. I find that visuals always help. But obviously if you've got any questions along the way, feel free to ask those as well, because if you're wondering, then there'll be people in the community that are wondering some other things as well. So, yeah. No, very happy to be interrupted. Yeah. All right. Oh hey, first slide. All right. So a little bit about the new ward system to start off with. And apologies being tucked in here behind the desk, but it is much more useful in terms of the microphone. So thank you for that. So as you know, for quite some time Nelson has been electing all of its councillors and the mayor, what we call at large, so the whole city regardless of which electoral role they're on, has voted for the whole council. That changes this time around. So after the election, this is a little bit of what the council table is going to look like. So we'll have a mayor, obviously, we'll have some ward councillors and we'll have three at-large councillors. So there are still three councillor positions that are going to be elected by the city as a whole. It's a little bit of a breakdown of the graphic there. So we've got two, what we call general wards. So they, the councillors that stand in each of those wards will be elected by those on the general roles. So there'll be four councillors coming through the central ward, which is sort of central, obviously the town centre, artified, and around the rural areas of Nelson. And then we've got four ward councillors that will be elected by the Stoke to Honuoi ward, which is honestly fairly self-explanatory. There's an interesting, a sort of topographical split actually between the two halves of the city. And interestingly, fairly even population split on the general role as well. Yeah. Yeah, there was some extensive conversations around the representation review, as you'll know. There are, there's a lot of work that needs to be done around what's referred to as communities of interest, which can be geographical, that can be to do with where people sort of work, play, other leisure activities, where they do their shopping, all of that kind of thing. But they did land and then, and there were a few options that were seriously considered by council. The final proposal, which was ratified by the local government commission and then was the two ward system. And of, of course, we have the Fokatu Maori ward. So we've got one Maori councillor there. The number of Maori councillors that are available to a local authority is calculated by an equation, a ratio that's set by the local electoral act. And so Nelson is currently eligible for one and the Maori ward encompasses the entirety of the Nelson electoral boundary, but for those on the Maori role. So that's the difference there. And then, yeah. Candidates can stand where they like. They're non- It does, it precludes them. So you have to choose between the wards that you want to stand on, but it wouldn't preclude them from standing as the mayor and it wouldn't preclude them from standing. You'd have to, yes, you pick a councillor position, but you could also stand for the mayor if you want to. But you can be on the Maori role and stand in a general ward, but your nominators, the two people that put you forward, essentially they need to be on the Maori role. The same in the general wards. So candidates, it doesn't matter where they live or which role they're on, to stand in a particular general ward, but their nominators need to be on the general role and in the correct ward. So that's, that's sort of where the limitation stands. And we've got the graphic representation there. So the purple band, the three at-large vacancies. Those are our councillors that are going to be elected by the city as a whole, regardless of which role that they're on. And the same with the mayor, obviously, that's another what we call at-large position. So that gives us 13 in total. Now, obviously, it's been quite some time since Nelson had wards, about 30 years in fact, since the local government realignment, late eighties, early nineties, so quite some time now. So we wanted to make things as easy as we could for people to identify which ward they're in. So you can pop online to the Nelson City Council website, we've got the address there, and type in your address at the top and it will give you your results. Your results if you're on the Maori role. Well, obviously, if you're on the Maori role, you're going to be in the Maori ward because it's the full electoral boundary, which wards you're in if you're on the general electoral role. And just reiterating that regardless, you're able to vote for the mayor and any councillors at large. But if you don't get, I mean, that's quite fun and it's nice to know in advance, particularly for those that are right on a ward boundary. You know, the ward boundary is run through the centre of the street, so you can end up in a different ward than the person over the street from you, which gets a bit confusing sometimes. Sure. If you just go, you don't need to type into the map. I mean, it's sort of primarily intended for that. But if you just click into the map and scroll in, you can start seeing where the boundary lines fall. But yeah, good question. The voting papers, you know, if you don't get a chance to do that or to check out in advance which ward you're in, the voting papers do make it really easy for you. So they're only going to present the candidates that you're actually able to vote for. So everybody obviously will see the mayoral candidates, everybody will see the at-large councillor positions, and then you'll see the candidates for the ward in which you're enrolled. So we keep it nice and simple. Correct. Yeah. So if you live in the Stoke to Honuoi ward, then those are the candidates that you're able to vote for.
But you can vote the general, central people?
No.
Sorry, I'm a bit confused now. Who's at large?
So we have- So you have one mayoral vacancy, which is what's called an at-large. So that's everyone. We have three councillor vacancies that are also at-large. Yep. So you can vote for those regardless of, regardless of which ward you're in. But there are the ward councillors, so that's four in central, four in Stoke to Honuoi, or one in the Maori ward. And so depending on, if you're on the Maori role, then it's the Maori councillor vacancy there that you're voting for. Or if you're on the general, it depends on where you live between those two general wards, central or Stoke to Honuoi, as to which candidates you'll be able to vote for, for the four vacancies.
As a candidate, are you willing to stand within your ward and also at large, as you say?
No. So you do need to pick one as a candidate. They all, when they were putting their nomination packs in, they needed to select which councillor option they wanted to stand for, and then whether they wanted to stand for the mayoralty as well, which a couple of them have. That most of them have chosen to stand just for one councillor position.
Yeah, I was just thinking if you were a new, or somebody wanted to come onto the council, you might not want to say, oh, I'll just stick with this ward. I might also want to see if I can get a product called a general.
So that's something that, that's something that they weigh up at the time that they put their nomination in. Yeah. That's correct. Yeah. Yes.
But it's also, I suppose, because the ward people are meant to be identifying with things that might just be personal to you or a little bit, and not, not the city at large.
When- Yeah, the, the ward system can work really well from that perspective. So every elected member takes a declaration at their very first meeting, we call it an inaugural meeting, and they take a declaration that they will consider the needs of the city as a whole in their decision-making, both current and future. Where the ward system can work really well is that they end up being a point of, a particular point of contact for people within the ward. So then they can advocate, you know, at the council table, obviously, for particular things that, you know, their constituents, for lack of a better word, their electors are bringing forward. So they bring forward those points, it hits discussion, it hits debate, and then they need to consider the persuasive points and the reports at the time, and then make the decision for the city as a whole. So it means that voices are huge and then the decision is made with all of the, yeah, all of the voices having been considered. But yeah, it's, yeah, it's a balancing act. Yes.
And it's been great because I'm meeting people, especially in the weekend, and meeting and talking to people. And that's exactly what the system is designed to do.
Yeah.
Talk as your locals, feedback, come back. They've all got lots of things in mind to do. Then I might be up too much with subtle teeth, but yeah, people, they have had some connection with you. But previously, it wouldn't have, but well, people did hi, hi, hi.
People do, I mean, I've worked for a number of other councils as well and people do, they do often connect with ward councillors. You know, and I've worked with mixed systems and it does, yeah, it can work really well having that combination of ward councillors and at-large councillors, because people have got options of who to reach out to. They might bump into someone in the supermarket, not unknown for elected members to be accosted and have a chat. Yeah.
It's also because certain candidates or councillors and all councillors, you do begin to know who has a particular interest in an area that you might be interested in, whether or not they happen to be a ward councillor. I mean, I really, I'm used to ward councillors, it's not, I'm familiar to me. As you can tell, I'm not indigenous to Nelson. But, you know, so I'm quite familiar and very comfortable with it. But it is a case that even within a ward, people's interests can vary quite a lot.
That's right. Yeah, yeah. Well, call it a challenge, call it a balance. Words, isn't it? All right. Let's talk a little bit about STV's single transferable vote. Because I want to come back to the point that you made, sorry, I don't know your name yet, but around what happens if you don't like any of the candidates in your ward. So that is one of the things that we can talk about. So a little bit about why council decided to move to single transferable vote in the first place. It is generally felt to be a fairer system. And the reason for that is that no voting power is lost, even if your first preferred candidate doesn't get elected. Because you'll, you'll be aware with the first past the post system, so the tick system, right? If your candidate doesn't get in, that can feel a bit like a lost vote. It's not because you've participated and that's been a really important process. But with single transferable vote, you have the opportunity to express that you'd like several people potentially to be involved on council. One of them you might have a strong preference for and other ones less of a preference, but you'd be perfectly comfortable to see them on council. And it means that if your first preference doesn't immediately get in, doesn't meet the quota, that we'll talk about in a moment, then your second might or your third, so there's a higher chance of being represented by someone or people that you support on the council. So, the how-to. STV is not a completely new system. You'll know that. The DHV's, the district health board's used it for quite some time. But I think for a lot of the city, it does feel kind of new because we're using it across several types of vacancies and because it's with a mixed ward system now as well. It just feels like a lot of change, right? So back to basics. So you can rank any of the candidates that you support for each of the election issues. So for the mayoral vacancies, you can say who's your top preference, who's number one. If you've got other preferences, number two, three, and so on, then you can rank those, as many as you wish of the candidates there. And the same for the at-large councillors and the same for your ward councillors. Now, coming back to your point, we do say, don't rank anyone that you don't support. So if you don't like any of the options, or if you only like a few of them, only rank those that you actually support. Because as soon as you give some ranking, some preference, they're likely to get at least a part of your vote. And if you don't want that, don't put any numbers down. And it's, it's perfectly fine if you're, if you're in the hypothetical situation that you outlined earlier, where you don't like any of your ward councillors, it's perfectly fine to express a preference for the mayoralty and perfectly fine to express a preference for the at-large councillors and give no preference at all to your ward councillors, and it will still be a valid vote for the election issues that you added numbers for. So there's no problem there at all. But where you are adding rankings, check that you haven't skipped or duplicated a number, because that's where we do run into some challenges with the votes becoming invalid. So what do I mean by that? So it's not unusual when someone's in the thick of it to go one, three, four, and accidentally skip a two. And sometimes you see one, two, two, three, so they've duplicated a number. So it's worth just running a quick eye over your voting paper before you seal it up in the envelope and send it off. It's fine if you have done something unintended like that to just scribble out the error and correct it, as long as it's really clear what your intention is in terms of your voting, then that's fine. Does need to be a number one. Yeah. Remember the number one. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And you've raised an excellent, yeah. Yeah, it doesn't. But you raise a really good point there, Murray, with the instructions. So again, the voting paper is really helpful on that front. So it only gives you the candidates that you're able to vote for, and it also has instructions at the top of each line, the number of vacancies that are to be filled, and a little reminder about that it's numbers. Yeah. Yeah. Number away. Yes, that's right. But there's a reasonable amount that the computer can deal with. So again, as long as you're, as long as your intention is clear, but- Yeah, yeah. Get it as close to the box as you can. So you can just vote one? Yeah. So only, only add as many preferences as, as you want. If you don't, if you only one like or support one mayoral candidate and the others aren't your cup of tea, just, just a one is fine. Yeah. 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 Certainly don't feel like you have to add a ranking for everybody, you know, every candidate. Just because they're there, only give a ranking to those that you really support. Yes, just leave them blank. Yep. So if you only support one candidate, add your number one and that's it. It gets sealed up and sent off.
We know there have been elections that we've battled with recently, over various places around the world, potentially New Zealand as well. If you leave the box open, it is possible that someone, in a room somewhere, could go through them and bump them off. This is the point. Do we trust people who have control over it? It is a thing you have to, but it's just a point, you know, stolen, there's a lot who votes the council, it's those who can't who can't. Just, it's precious today, we had two elections and we had a draw, two different scott, right? So we didn't, ourselves at home, adjust and according to, we took it to a JV. And the JV, the, the validation of it, threw out a hat, basically. It's a ballot and stamp, so it's been authorised by a JV. That takes it out of your hands. So if something happens and you're not sure of, you'd have to have it authorised and you're all that.
There are extensive processes and legal processes in relation to it. Our electoral office is an external, they have a huge, well-established processing plant, which is in Christchurch. So that's where our postal votes end up and those that are collected via the ballot bins sent there as well for processing. It is possible to appoint scrutineers, so there is provision for that under the Act so that people can check that everything's on the up and up in terms of the processing. Candidates are able to request a recount within certain situations. All of that is dealt with through the courts and it's further legislation at the moment to even further tighten up and clarify those processes as well. So I don't, I don't know that it's possible to establish a fully unassailable system. But there's a, there's a lot in place, a lot of protections in place. Yeah. So candidates must reach a quota of votes to be elected. So for those that are interested, the quota is the total number of valid votes received divided by the number of vacancies in the election, election issue that's at hand plus one. So that's one of the reasons why it's slightly slower, the processing for STV rather than first past the post, because the quota is calculated. It's, and the algorithm that's used, it's, and the calculator is created for all STV elections across New Zealand by, and managed by the Department of Internal Affairs. And so they can be followed up with as well. So this is not exactly what your voting paper is going to look like, but it's a legal, what we're allowed to provide from stv.govt.nz, which is a website that's managed by DIA. So you'll see something similar on the voting papers that are sent out as of this coming Friday. So it'll show Nelson City Council, the election of- Uh so it'll show Nelson City Council, the election of however many councillors or the mayor. A reminder of how S T V works, so to rank the names. All of the names are going to be in fully computerized random order, so no one's voting paper is going to look exactly the same. Uh they'll, all the names will be in slightly different order. And then you'll have the boxes that you can order.
For the board and, you know, will I get um um a paper for the. Uh for example, the out of five ward candidates and one for the mayor and then one for the uh general? Or is it all on one page?
It's all on the one paper, um and then special print runs are done for the different ward, different wards, yeah. The order of the names will be different, yeah, it's fully randomized. I suppose there is a small po- um prob- possibility.
So this makes it impossible to do a proper. This is pretty much impossible to take. And it's almost impossible.
Yeah, recounts are certainly not a short process, but they are an available process. It's an available process. So if there are, if candidates, if there's a very close result. Um and a candidate requests it, uh or the electoral officer requests it, then it is taken through the courts, but yeah, it does happen.
The the likelihood, I mean, there aren't so many candidates that you're going to get so many um ties at the finishing line.
It makes it very, there is no, I can't raise it, it's very, it's not, it's not transpired. But it's not easy for a member of the public to send it out at most, just check this. Let's see the papers. And even if you did see the papers, you perhaps know clearly how to sort that. So the whole outcome of the elections is completely, uh whether you have a computer.
Same like, you you prefer first past the post.
Yeah, ultimately I would, I mean, I think that's the most straightforward system and it's completely transparent. People then know that it's honorable, even if they don't necessarily agree with that.
Sorry.
Sorry. That's all right. You're very welcome to this, yeah.
The issue for me, that that I've always queried about first past the post, is that actually a system like this. May not be comfortable and none of us may get what we actually want, but you do, I believe. You're more likely to get a fairer reflection of what many people want.
I agree with it. I agree with it if everything is above board.
Well, I I don't, I'm sorry, I don't share your cynical view of the.
Quite clear that elections have been fiddled with. And in one way in America, just recently, not not the Trump one, a a local election in a local election like this. The lady challenged it and she was found on hand to a fellow that she had been second. And.
I I I personally think first past the post is just as liable for that sort of problem as anything here.
Uh yeah, and. Certainly, um for you, excuse me, or others in the community that are interested to find out more about S T V. The calculator and so on, there is more information on s t v dot G O V T dot N Z. So that's the website of the Department of Internal Affairs and that are responsible for the algorithm that's involved. Uh you're also really welcome, uh we've hit a number of queries um from those. That enjoy a deep dive into the systems as well, um through to our electoral officer, Warwick Lamp. So you're very welcome to reach out to him. His details are available on the website as well and. Warwick Lamp. Lamp, yeah. He's very good at such things. He's very good at throwing life on situations and very responsive. Let's talk a little bit um about, uh at a high level, uh to be fair, about what happens um with the calculations. So you'll see the quota there, so we've talked um very briefly about uh how that's calculated. So that um once all the valid votes have been worked through, uh then the quota is worked out. And then we go through the first preference and we see there that Wika. Uh has more votes than she needs from the first preferences. She's elected, she's over the quota. Uh but those extra votes, which she's, are not needed, go to the second favorite candidates listed. So we look at all the same, um second favorite votes or choices on the votes that she received. And a percentage of those extra votes go to the other candidates. So you can see in the breakdown there. That there's a few more for yellow than for the others, Kakarua. And so with the second preferences being reallocated out, we've got Wika that's reached the quota and we've got Kakarua. But we've got no one else that's got votes that have gone over the quota. So what happens next? There's the candidate with the least uh votes at that point, with the least preferences. Is eliminated. So Kareda is taken out of the running. And the votes there are redistributed and we can see Shiti Poinama is going to do very well. Out of that redistribution. And hit the quota. So it is, it's definitely different from the first past the post um with that redistribution. But um as we were talking about earlier, that's why there's no loss of voting power. Because even if your first preference um didn't get in, so maybe your first preference. Uh was uh Kakarua and they didn't originally get in with the first preferences being counted. They did well out of the redistribution and the second preferences and were elected. So there's a higher chance of someone getting in that you support.
Yeah, and then you've got to see. Would that be then considered, they actually got the most votes?
It doesn't matter, you have to, um as long.
On on the example you just showed, the one that came in first.
Yeah.
And then.
Well, they hit the, yeah.
The second one has come in with more votes, but is it just?
It's not that they came in first, it's that they had enough um first preference votes in the first round to reach the quota. And so they were elected, so the quota is everything.
So how do you know who's the most popular person?
Do you need to? Oh, you're talking about for the mayor, right? But I mean, it it it's meant to be, you know. In that case, it it becomes winner takes all, so to speak, uh but it doesn't matter because you're voting for a group of people. And and as I said, some of them.
You have no idea what. What leaving is though. Means they're just getting, I mean, they're left in on the council, doesn't matter where they're at. Five thousand points ahead of someone else, and just, they're all winning. That's why I'm trying. Assuming the algorithms. They say, I mean, there's a massive assumption, and I know I've been very single, but it's a very.
But it's completely irrelevant. After about five minutes, if someone's got twenty thousand votes more than anyone else. So what, they're on the.
Or even.
That's it.
Fifty more than somebody else, which could be.
It doesn't, they're not going to be any better than anyone else who gets on, because they've got so many parts, they've just become a councillor. Pretty irrelevant, how many votes you got, as long as you get past that quota.
And it's your performance as a councillor that.
But I mean, yeah, some people in the current system came by their votes. Yeah. They get a tiny part.
Well, I'm going to listen to Robert next time.
You you obviously have it psychologically, these things.
No, not necessarily.
What, you're just suggesting that you do it?
They're just, it's just gone through all the course, lots of papers and.
Oh, yeah.
But all the money that's been spent on the elections, I mean, everyone's got an election budget. Some people just have more money to be able to cover their budget.
But as far as, oh, well, yes, of course, and you can see that in relation to advertising and all the rest. That that's a fact, that some people have the wherewithal to advertise themselves more loudly than others, let's put it that way. But I guess it's up to us as voters to see whether that's significant or not.
See, look at our current mayoral run, don't you? He's got the most money. Anyways, so yeah, anyways.
Yeah, it's interesting because candidates across the country, some choose to spend, you know, quite an amount. Within, they do have limits as to what they can spend. Um. Yeah, yeah, they do have a budget, which is population, um election population based. It depends on the population, so the the mayor, I th- I think it's about forty thousand. Yes, it's because it's, you know, for the whole electoral population. And the general ward councillors are about half there because it's about half the electoral population. Uh the Maori ward spend is quite a lot smaller because the Maori roll, or the Maori electoral population is so much smaller. Um so that's challenging.
Actually, it wasn't a dosh, is it?
No, but it, yeah.
The offering your American hock goods if you both like.
Yeah, or no, they can't because that would be, that would be treating, which is against the law. But look, it is interesting because some, some candidates choose to spend a reasonable amount of money in a, you know, a variety of ways. Um others choose very deliberately not to. Um they might use existing social media um and reach out to a certain audience that way. They might do the door knocking that Mari was talking about and connect with people in different ways. So they do have a variety of options available to them um in ways that they might choose to connect with people, some of which involve spending, some of which doesn't. All of um, there are requirements around um declaring their expenses, declaring any donations received. So uh yeah, that is something that they bear in mind. Yeah.
What's the situation um out of that budget? Can you um employ somebody to to do a bit of P R for you if you want to?
It's not unusual for someone to have a campaign manager uh or to. Uh pay for sign writing, you know, all that kind of thing. Um. It's, it's an expense that gets declared, you know, all of it's, yeah. As long as it's written down, but yeah, it's not unusual to get other people involved to help out and. None of us are, you know, have strength in everything, so drawing on other people. Yeah. Cool. Giving away your background. Well, thank you so much for um joining us this evening and asking some great questions. Uh we do, um I think as you know, um but do let um people that might be interested in attending. Or, you know, that weren't able to come along this evening, know we've got a session tomorrow evening at five thirty at the Victory Community Centre. On Thursday evening, also at five thirty at the Green Meadows Community Centre. So we wanted to uh get out into some neighbourhoods as well. And we we know that um Celtic House can be off-putting for people as well, you know, even if they could make it. So we, we wanted to get out and about a bit, so. Yeah, it's brilliant. What's that, sorry? Warwick, yeah, feel free to reach out to him, um otherwise to check out more information on that website. Yeah, 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 no, reach out to Warwick. Uh so it is uh managed, so it's created and managed by Department of Internal Affairs, but they're responsible for the algorithm. That's um on behalf of all S T V elections across New Zealand. Yes, are they? I don't, sorry, yeah.